April 26, 2022. I gotta say, when we're in person, I'm a lot more nervous than on Zoom. So if I'm out of sorts, please, little grace, because I am not one to talk out in public. Okay, let's go ahead, call to order. Can I get a roll call?
Madam President, we did start at 5:30. I'll go ahead and I'll take roll call. Trustee Ekas.
Here.
Trustee La French.
La French, present.
Trustee Turner. Trustee Webster.
Present.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, present. 1.004, Pledge of Allegiance. Can we please stand? Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now move, moving on to adoption of the agenda. 2.001, Proposed additions, deletions, and adjustments in the order of business.
Madam President, we do not have any tonight.
Okay, so let's go on to 2.02. Adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Ekas, I motion.
Okay.
Webster, a second.
Webster, second. Thank you. And now for the vote.
Trustee Ekas.
I.
Trustee La French.
Trustee La French, I.
Trustee Turner. Trustee Webster.
Trustee Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, going on to three special recognitions. 3.001, 10 and 15 years of service employee recognition.
Thank you, President Benz. Welcome everyone, and we'd like to welcome all of our 10 and 15 year employees. And so at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Moran.
Your thing's not on. Red to lock, blue to hold down.
Okay, thank you. All right, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Good evening, Board President Benz, trustees, cabinet members, and audience members. Thank you for being here tonight. Mr. Quintero, our Public Information Officer is going to be helping with tonight's presentation. Tonight, we're going to honor employees who have reached a variety of milestones, their 10 year anniversary or 15 year anniversary. And this is for the year's 1920 school year and the 2021 school year, so we're playing catch up due to the pandemic. But again, as Dr. Mitchell stated, and Board President stated, it's great to see folks in person here. So tonight, Mr. Quintero is going to have a brief presentation, and we're going to honor those employees, classified and certified, as well as administrators who have reached the 10 year and or 15 year anniversary, as well as we have a few board members who've reached a milestone as well. So I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. Moran, and good evening, President Benz, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Mitchell, Cabinet Members, Staff, Students, and Guests. It's an honor to be here to recognize staff of the Adelanto Elementary School District who have devoted their careers to enriching a child's life through education. The Service Awards is typically an annual event. Due to the pandemic, the district postponed this event until it was deemed safe to do so. So we're excited to be back here this evening. The annual Service Awards Ceremony is part of a tradition of recognition and gratitude for our dedicated employees whose accomplishments and outstanding work contribute to the success of our students, teachers, staff, and alumni of the Adelanto Elementary School District. The Service Awards Ceremony honors and recognizes our staff for service milestones at 10, 15, 20, 25, and 30 years of service. Tonight, we will recognize staff with 10 and 15 years of service to the district during the 2019, 2020, and 2020, 21 academic year. So I will be reading names, and if you are present with us in the room, please feel free to stand. And if you're joining us on Zoom, and one of the honorees, please feel free to wave and let us know that you're there so we can acknowledge you via Zoom. So for tonight, I will begin with the 2019, 2020, 10 years of service. Christina Philip.
Ricardo Jimenez.
Deborah Mockler.
Mary Cruz Perez.
And then 10 years of service, you can stay standing, please, for 2021 would be Michelle Autry.
Tricia Burns.
Crystal Diaz. George Fresta. Jennifer Hendricks. Vanessa Hopkins. Emily Lamesh. Stephanie Latham. Susan Lucero. Michelle McGraw. Emmanuel Moreno. Yolanda Razo. And Renee Vasquez. Stay standing. If you're on Zoom, please give us that best tournament of rose parade wave so we can acknowledge you via Zoom. And we want to thank you for all for the 10 years of service. So now at this time, we want to recognize the 15 years of service, 2019, 2020, school year, academic year. Vicki Bell. Denise Braille. Roque Caillas. Empero Castillo. David Chow. Ali Ekas. Gladys Jorge Solis. Norma Flores. Mark Forbes. Bernard Fry. David Garcia. Francesca Hardy Rogers. Heidi Hernandez. Teresa Martinez. Artie, Kari Metasek. Jonathan McDonald. Terrell Machelli. Kathy Murphy. Teresa Padilla. Armida Ramirez. Ramon Rizzo. Kimberly Sanchez. Maria Sandoval. Lupe Smith. Marcela Tropea. Christine Turner. Rebecca Von Sont. And that's our 2019, 2020. Please stay standing, and we'll welcome the 2020, 2021, 15 years of service recipients. Sonia Hernandez. Jason Hess. Amber Hewitt. Carolyn Hayward. Brenda Holtz. Charles Kennedy. Gloria Lopez. Gabriel Nares. Cynthia Palacios. Adriana Pantoja. Guadalupe Perez. Austin Perry. Bertha Saez. Peter Salinoff. Sarah Sherman. Stephen Tapia. Fernando Torres. Tammy Underwood. Richard Upshaw. Anna Watson Allen. Michelle Zilner. So we want to congratulate each of the honorees for this evening for a job well done. Oh, so we have another 15 year recipient, Leanne Gross. Apologies to you. Congratulations to each of you. We appreciate your job well done. We do appreciate your service and especially your love for A E S D. I mean, to put in 10 years, 15 years plus, shows that you have heart and commitment and spirit. And so we appreciate the strength that you have and with the love that you've given to the students of the Adelanto Elementary School District. Also, we want to give a special thank you. It's been a couple of years, but we want to thank Mr. Carlos Moran, the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resource Services, and his Executive Secretary, Ravi Peralta, for organizing the Service Awards this evening. They administer this particular program, and we appreciate the leadership and coordination of this important event. And so thank you very much. And I'll hand the floor back over to Dr. Mitchell and the Board. Congratulations.
Do any trustees want to say any words?
Yes, you guys are all so awesome. Thank you. Thank you for your service and your love for our district. And I know many of you, and we got through it, and I hope you stay a little bit longer. Anyway, I love you guys and thank you.
Press red or blue. Blue is to press and talk, red is to lock, and then you don't have to press it.
I would like to just piggyback on what Trustee Ekas said. It's a pleasure and an honor to sit here for 15 years and to see so many of you dedicate your time and your service to A E S D. Again, I hope that you stick around because we have a long way to go. And thank you again for your time, your dedication, and everything that you give to our children every single day. And to my fellow trustees, thank you for your time, and hopefully you'll be here 15 years. Not me. Thank you again.
All right, I just want to just, you know, thank you so, so much for your here. You know, it does take a lot. Those kids, they take a lot, you know, but I know that it's a work of heart. And I just want to thank each and every one of you for all that that you do. It truly does mean a lot that you are here and sticking with us. All right. No? You want to say something? Yeah.
Um, okay, so I want to take a moment, and I just want to like idolize this time tonight, you know, showing appreciation to those milestones that impact our students every day. To me, it's just so wonderful, and I want to give everybody another round of applause because you guys are amazing. Thank you for being a part of this district, and I hope to see each and every one of you for years on. So thank you, and I will be quiet now.
Well, I just want to say thank you to everyone here tonight. It takes great dedication, and I know that this is a field where I myself, you know, as a former teacher, that we feel as if that sometimes, you know, we are not recognized for all we do. I mean, but being here even after the pandemic and having a whole different set of lesson plans and being on Zoom and learning how to do different things, I just want to say, you know, from the bottom of my heart that I appreciate each and every one of you for staying in this field as I do today because of the love that you have for the children, the families, the community, just as well as your coworkers that you're there for on a daily basis. I truly say thank you. And thank you to our board members as well for being here for 15 years. Thank you very much.
Okay, and we have one more, more thing.
Yes, and so we have a couple more names, Arena. Apologize, Board. Let's turn it back over to Mr. Moran. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mitchell. So I apologize. So we also have, I believe they're here in the audience, Howard Carrera, 15 years. Please stand, and Bert Kristof, 15 years. So thank you. I apologize for that. So if there's anyone else we may have missed, if you don't mind seeing Ms. Peralta in the back, and we'll make that correction. But again, thank you so much for being here. Thank you.
We saved the best for last. That's what it was. All right, let's go ahead. For closed session declarations, we will be taking items 4.02 and 4.05 into closed session. So let's go on to five public testimony before closed session.
No testimony before close. Thank you.
Before close. Okay. So move, moving on to six, let's recess to closed session. Can I get a motion?
Ekas, I motion.
Okay, can I get a second?
Webster, I second. Okay, and now we need a vote.
Trustee Ekas.
I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner. Trustee Webster.
Trustee Webster's, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Motion passes 5-0. The time is now 5:46. We'll be back.
And adhere to the promise of lower class sizes. These students deserve more focused attention for their academic progress certainly, but also for their social emotional health and development. Packing our classes to the hilt as a way to begin the school year is short sighted at best and disastrous mismanagement at worst. As we know, students continue to enroll all the way up to Labor Day. If our classes are jam packed full, the only way to successfully grow is to create combination classes. Those classes are usually staffed with long term substitute teachers while permanent staff is recruited, interviewed, and hired. So a student in this scenario would have at least three new adults to get used to. Those first few days of school are a critical bonding time for our classes. To disregard the importance of that shows an ignorance of the rapport teachers build with students from day one. I understand that you are trying to run this district as a business, but we are not a business. We are an educational institution funded by the state and federal government. The state allocates money for the education of our students, spend the money on our students. All of our cabinet are new, but Ms. Turner, Ms. Ekas remember, as do many of our staff and teachers, the history of Adelanto School District. Staffing these packed classrooms will be a problem. When teachers have other options, they will not come to work here. Students are not the only ones with a strain on mental health and emotional wherewithal. Having a fully packed class creates an enormous burden, especially paired with the uncertainty that our class will stay in the current configuration. Many of us delay putting name tags on our kids' desks until we are sure the classes we have are the classes we'll keep. We know that we'll lose a couple of students as new classes are formed to manage the influx ex post facto. This year above any other year is not the time to use that destructive strategy. Please let this be the year that we do what is best for students. Finally, I would like to take this opportunity to honor and thank our principals and AAIACs. In consideration of how hard they work, I reflected on what our principals really do for our schools. Strong leadership is the foundation of a school's success. In this role, the principal also has to build a positive culture and value system in a school. Principals are problem solvers, financial managers, and resource handlers. Principals ensure that the processes, procedures, rules, and regulations of the district are followed. Principals ensure the curricula are studied and implemented. Principals ensure that the facilities are kept in good condition. Then there's the role of principal as parent to the small child in primary school or the child who is a victim of bullying. Let's not forget the role of our principal as psychologist, listening to children, teachers, and parents, and helping them to bounce back and stay motivated. Other roles of our principals are cheerleader, mediator, innovator. It is a bonus for us teachers when the principal remembers how it was to be a teacher and treats us accordingly. Teachers don't need to be micromanaged. They need to be supported so they can do their jobs with minimum interference. Principals are constantly required to come up with new ways of doing things, adjust to new technology and to new curricula, and generate funds outside the budget. I am sure I can go on to expound upon the accountabilities of our principals. I can go on and on. The bottom line is that they have a diverse and complex job where leadership, values, and culture play a gigantic role. Our principals are dependable, humble, they have a sense of humor, and a rock solid commitment to Adelanto students and families. A personal shout out to my administration, Kristen Cooper and Jonathan Wilson, who are the inspiration for my reflections tonight. This is a job for a very special person, a leader amongst men and women, someone to emulate, someone that requires our support. As a president of our Teachers Association, I would like to remind the Board to be proactive as you plan for next year. Additionally, and before I conclude, I would like to reflect on a quote by Oprah Winfrey. Let us step out of the history that is holding us back and step into the new story we are willing to create. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Board welcomes Jennifer Gonzalez speaking on behalf of CSEA. Mike, she's online.
There I am. Good evening, trustees, cabinet, and A E S D staff. I would like to begin by saying how honored I am to represent CSEA tonight as the second Vice President of our great chapter. I would also like to state how proud I am of our CSEA and ADTA staff who have done their best to navigate this crazy school year. Masks, plastic barriers, and a significant increase of problematic student behavior have all added to the challenges which we already face every school year. I personally feel that I have gotten closer to some of you at my site thanks to the trauma bonding, so at least we have that. Furthermore, I want to add that I can only hope that our district appreciates all of our staff's efforts as much as I do. Many of us are tired, and we feel like we're the band on the Titanic going down, simply trying to get through these last 26 days of school. The good news is, there's only 26 more days left of school. I would also like to mention that it is my hope that the current vacant CSEA positions are filled as soon as possible so that we can come back to work in August with as little stress as possible. It is my understanding that the position for the Director of IT is going to be filled before our open IT positions. I'm having a hard time understanding how this could possibly be when our IT positions have been vacant for well over a year. During the COVID quarantine time, it became easy to see just how important our IT department is. We are currently beginning testing at our school site via Chromebooks, which wouldn't be possible if something were to go wrong with our technology. My question to this Board and Cabinet is, why does one single director position take precedence over multiple useful IT positions? Shouldn't every school site be able to have their own tech? And wouldn't it be much more useful to take that one director's salary in order to help fund this? I spoke to the Board on September 14th in 2021, asking for many of the positions which are still vacant now to be filled then. Unfortunately, I'm here asking again that these same positions, as well as the new vacancies, be filled so that the staff on our campuses stress just a little less about performing their duties in addition to the duties of others. I want to conclude by sincerely thanking all of our classified staff and certified staff for all of their hard work and efforts. Those who are going home completely drained but still do their best to show up the next day because they know that there won't be any subs. I don't think we hear it enough, so I would like to state again how much I appreciate everyone who is trying their hardest to do the best they can. Without all of you, this district would cease to exist. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
As the Board recognizes Jennifer again speaking on our own behalf.
Ah, they didn't know I'd go back to back. Okay. I can honestly say that this year at Mason Linda Middle School has been the most challenging that I've ever experienced. When staff and students alike are able to be not only verbally but also physically assaulted with little to no repercussions given to the student or students responsible, it's no wonder our site has had so many problems. I wish that I could say that
I wish that I could say that these occurrences were rare, but unfortunately it's a daily issue. Lunch and after school detentions are assigned but never served. Students that have been written up laugh openly and state that it doesn't matter because nothing will happen to them. And amazingly, they're correct. In fact, it seems that these students can do almost anything short of murder and be told to return to class. Frequently, these same students will then simply wander campus generally refusing any directives. How are our teachers expected to do their job when students that are chronically truant bang on their doors and windows enter classrooms which aren't their own in order to curse at, bully and threaten other students and sometimes staff? What kind of an environment is being created when those same students are then taken to the office and immediately told to return to their class just so that the cycle can start all over again? It's no wonder that substitutes never want to come back to work at our site continually leading to staff shortages. The remaining permanent staff left on our campus are exhausted. A majority of the students who come to our school to get an education are frustrated and I still can't comprehend why students aren't being held accountable for their actions. The addition of our new SRO seemed great, however, when they're instructed not to cite these students, it appears to me that this is just another example of our district throwing away money. Why is the district so terrified to actually give these children consequences and what in the world has happened to SARB? Per the California Department of Education, California compulsory education law requires everyone between the ages of six and 18 years of age to attend school except those who have graduated from high school or passed the CHSPE. The CDE further states that truancy and excessive absenteeism cause costly, long-term problems for students, schools and the community. So why are we nurturing these behaviors? Because it won't do them any favors later on and it certainly isn't doing us any now. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
That concludes our speakers. Thank you.
Wait, wait.
Now the board welcomes Ressa Barias.
Thank you so much. My name is Risa Barias. I am an AESD parent. And first I'd like to join in congratulating Superintendent Mitchell on being honored as superintendent of the year. And I'd also like to join in thanking the numerous teachers, staff and board members who were recognized tonight for their 10 and 15 years of service. However, the administration's thanks ring hollow in the wake of the district's refusal to provide cost of living adjustments commensurate even with half the rate of inflation. On top of this, our classroom sizes are too large and it's harming our teachers and our kids. Teachers' work conditions are students' learning conditions and I'll level with you. My child's teachers are scared of the students. The classes are unmanageable in size and emotional need. They don't have management of the classroom. Our district continues to fail to show needed support for our teachers and consequently our students. And while I appreciate and support our restorative justice framework for a disciplinary structure for our students, that doesn't mean that we don't use consequences, that there are not consequences to face. To that end, I feel it's even more insulting to try and create a new administrative position for an IT department that doesn't have enough technicians to meet the district's needs. To be clear, this isn't an issue of needing better management and administration. This is an issue of workers being stretched well beyond reasonable expectations at all levels of the district. Provided these considerations, I urge the board to vote no on item seventeen point zero eight. Furthermore, given the newly agreed upon parliamentary time constraints that board meetings must end by nine thirty, it is essential to move close, move closed session to the end of meetings. The Board of Trustees is elected to represent our teachers, students, families and community. The district has a responsibility to prioritize our voices. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our comments board. Thank you.
Okay, so go, go, going on to a love, loving super superintendent's report.
So board, I'm going to greatly amend my report by I'm going to share my screen. So give me one second as I get set up here. And so board, I'll make sure that I cut it down significantly. Um, I just wanted to share a couple of announcements. So number one, I want to recognize a few days that are coming up this month to recognize the outstanding work that many of our, our staff are doing. And so we have a recognition of administrative professionals day on four twenty seven, which is tomorrow. Those are admin assistants, school principals day is May, May first, nurses day is May eleventh. CNS week is the week of May second and teacher day is May eleventh and classified employee week is the week of May fifteenth. And so sorry for that typo. So I just want to personally thank all of our staff for all the hard work that you do. You certainly deserve recognition. We couldn't do it without all of these key staff members. And so we're just looking forward to celebrating the many things that you do to make Adelanto education a success. And so we're looking forward to celebrating and doing some, some great things over the next couple of weeks to honor all of the staff here. So notes, the next I want to congratulate our ten and fifteen year service award employees. Thank you for your long service and continued service to our district means a lot and we're, so we're glad to celebrate that milestone with you. Number three here, I wanted to congratulate Dr. Dwyer's aunt. She has recently completed a special education academy offered by AXA. And so this really demonstrates our commitment to all staff learning and continuing to get better. And so that adds to our knowledge and expertise as it relates to special education, which is obviously a very key function in our school district. So congratulations, Dr. Dwyer's aunt. Thank you. Many of you, for those of you who recognize, I'm being recognized as superintendent of the year by retired superintendent for Riverside County Office of Education, who is now the board chair of IECN. IECN is a consortium of, to grow economic capacity within the community. And so they'll be recognizing me at the LA County Fair on the fourteenth. Board, I haven't heard from you. If you want me to purchase you a ticket to attend with me, would love to. Yeah, yeah, you did. I've heard from a couple of you. I shouldn't say I haven't heard from all of you. So thank you for those of you who will be attending with me and looking forward to it. It is a great reflection on our district. I could not be, be worthy of that recognition were it not for my cabinet, our principals, the staff, all of our managers and all of our teachers and classified staff. So thank you. Next, I want to congratulate or acknowledge that we have some folks that are being honored next week by the, by the seven eight county superintendent schools offices. So we have a couple of folks within our community that will be given the education medal of honor and distinguished awards. And so one to recognize Phyllis Morris Green, who served as the district attorney for seven eight county for eight years before she retired. She was an AESD alumni, went to all of our schools. And so we were happy to nominate her for that award. Number two, want to recognize that Dolores Williams, founder, president and CEO of Millionaire Mind Kids. And she's being honored for the volunteer award for all the work that she's done in the high desert related to millionaire mind kids. And so I want to congratulate them. The award ceremony is actually this Thursday, five thirty PM via Zoom. And so the information is on your calendars trustees. Want to, just a couple of announcements for, for the district. We are, have started our statewide testing cast is underway. I'm so happy about that. Just for information, we're testing grades three through eight, English language arts and math, five and eight science and five and seven PE. Special education students are administered alternative assessments. Students are engaged and taking it very seriously. We're hearing some great reports from our administrators and teachers out there. And we're looking forward to the results early summer only to, to drive our planning and professional development and all the things that we'll do to support children and teachers. I want to make sure that the, the community knows that our summer enrichment camp registration is open and available on our website. We're offering summer enrichment for our grades K through seven. It'll run from June ninth to July one, eight to twelve. Breakfast and lunch will be served. Registration is online and can be found on our website as well as at the schools, as well as at the, the red district registration center. And the program is really ramped up this year to include academic enrichment as well as study trips and fun assemblies and projects. And so kids will, will not, will have much more to look forward to than just kind of drill and kill. We want our kids to really catch up on some skills and enrich some skills, but also have some fun. It is summertime. So we're happy about that. I'm going to skip to significant. Let me see if I can just go straight. Let me see if I can go straight to where I'm going to go to. In the interest of time. So I did want to talk, I'll just do this slide. So I did want to give an overview tonight of our planning for two thousand twenty two, twenty three as relates to alternative learning programs overview. I wanted to provide some clarity and so let the staff, the community and our staff know about the planning that we're doing and putting in place to enrich and, and expand our alternative learning options for next year. So first some things that we want to be clear on. So our district will continue to offer independent study in the short term. This requires, this is for kids who are having some medical issue or emergency issue or some type of short term need. They may need to leave the state or the, or their city for a family affair. And those, and that independent study is, should not exceed fifteen days. And that kid, those kids are assigned to the teacher of record. So that's short term independent study. And so that will continue to be available for our children who need that. And then secondly, the issue, the independent study in a long term. I want to make sure that staff knows that we are discontinuing the independent study that as it currently exists. That will be sunsetting in, in June. That was provide, that independent study was, was, was accorded to us in response to COVID and distance learning and where parents may have not felt comfortable sending their children to in-person learning. And so the state allowed us to, to really significantly ramp up our independent study offering to kids. And so we grew from an independent study program pre pandemic of about twenty thirty kids to about four hundred. We are tell, we have informed those students that those, those four hundred kids that they will be returning to in-person learning. And we will be watching out for the state in terms of any continued allowance for us to be able to provide an alternative study setting outside of the normal school day. But we still will offer independent studies long term as it existed pre, pre COVID. You need to, to get into that program and needs to come through from a recommendation through an SST or a five oh four process. Students in long-term independent study will not exceed one year. And those kids will be assigned to district level independent study teachers. Again, this is not the current ISP program that was afforded to us by the state due to COVID. This is because of the regular long-term independent study program, very limited in numbers and should come through the SST or five oh four process. Number three, home and hospital. This is a long-term independent study provision. This needs to be physician ordered. And so a physician that deems that, that gives a physician's order around a kid, you know, may break his leg or be in traction or have some kind of ailment that's requiring them to be at home. This, the kids will be enrolled in home and hospital, not to exceed one year. It needs to come from a doctor's note and they'll be assigned to district level home and hospital teachers or teachers. We're excited about this. We will be restructuring our existing AESD virtual academy. This is under development. We're going to be reaching out to teachers and leaders to help us develop this program. We're looking to start a small pilot for twenty two, twenty three. We are going to make a choice school that you get into competitive application. It would be a hybrid model, be in-person, virtual as, as well as some independent study aspects. And then those kids would be assigned to the virtual academy. We need to rebrand it, rename it, all that kind of stuff. We're creating a choice school. So just like we have Gus and George and Melva Davis, this new school would be a choice as well and be, be kids will get into competitive application. We are trying to compete with our competitors out there. I won't name them because I don't want to provide any advertisement for them. But you know who they are and we want to, we think we can do it better than you guys. You know who you are. We can do it better. And so we're going to be helping to, to build this program. We're going to need your input and support on this. And so this is under development. And lastly, what's under development is our tier is opportunity program. We believe that we need to provide other means of correction for our children who are, who are struggling significantly in school. And so we're going to create a tier three behavioral intervention that comes through recommendation from the SST, the five oh four or in lieu of expulsion. Again, a tier three behavioral intervention, only behavior, not academics. But of course we know that behavior impacts academics. But, but there needs to come through an SST process or five oh four process or in lieu of expulsion should not exceed one year and they'll be assigned to opportunity teachers. In addition, the opportunity program will also include a youth court by which the board would be, or the, the administrative hearing panels for expulsions would be able to assign, assign a corrective action as, as going and bringing the student's case toward to a youth court, which would involve kids and staff and that would work together to, to, to to develop corrective actions for students. We also would be establishing an anti-bullying program as well as our mental health supports there would, would come through the opportunity program as well, as well as restorative practices. Really providing an opportunity for our kids and not just be punished for what they do. Certainly punish them, but, but certainly commit and be deliberate about teaching pro-social behaviors. Teaching kids, not just telling them that they did wrong, but actually walking them through a development to learn how to make pro-social decisions and better decisions for themselves as well as take responsibility of how their behaviors are impacting others, including themselves. And so we're looking forward to that. Dr. Dwyer's aunt will be creating some committees around this work board and we're looking to have these up and running in the fall for next year. And so looking for your input as well. We will include Melva Davis in this program because I know that she ran a stellar program prior to her retirement. So we've asked, we've asked her to be involved in this development and board. We'll take a board meeting where we get your feedback and input on this. And so we're going to go slow, go fast on this one. With the, with the virtual academy as well as the opportunity program to make sure that we have significant input from staff and students and community. And so with that, those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Twelve Gov, Gov, governing board men, members re reports and announce, now. Who would like, like to go, go first?
Okay, I guess I'll start off real quickly. I'm looking forward to the graduations coming up. Those are real exciting. I cannot wait. Second of all, May eleventh is National Teacher Day. Again, I would like to acknowledge the teachers and let them know how much I appreciate them and love them. Not just on that day, but every single day you are appreciated. And then lastly, I've requested this and I haven't seen it yet, but just a reminder, I would like to have Ms. Amy Hunter's photo and her resolution posted in our boardroom in honor of her. So if anybody can look into that and get that done, I know I would totally appreciate that. I think she deserves that honor and it does, it does need to be in our boardroom to remind us of what a beautiful board member she was. So those are, that's my comment.
I'm happy to execute that. Thank you, trustee.
Thank you. Trustee La, La French?
I'm going to wave my comments due to time.
Trustee Web, Webster?
I'm sorry, I had a time. I do want to take a moment and recognize all of these, these national days for all of our staff throughout our district. And I want to say I look forward to speaking with you, Dr. Mitchell, on what we as a district will be doing in like for all of these different days. I want to say thank you for everyone who came out again tonight to celebrate the ten and the fifteens. Once again, milestones are definitely worth celebrating and I will go ahead and be quiet at that point. Thank you.
Trustee Turner?
I will keep my comments brief. Again, I would like to recognize our ten and fifteen year employees on your service and dedication to the district. I know it's been a long time coming. We missed that celebration last year. But I just want you to know that you are, you are honored and we appreciate the work that you're doing for our students and our. We appreciate the work that you're doing for our students and our and our staff. I had an opportunity to visit um Mesa Linda and also Columbia Middle School on Friday. And I have to say, it was a great visit. I I see both schools coming along, you know, I know that there's a lot of problems at Mesa Linda. And um I think with the new leadership, you know, I think that we can begin to heal, and I'm looking forward to that. Um I'm also happy to hear that we're bringing back our opportunity program. Um I would like to also piggyback on that, Dr. Mitchell, and maybe. I don't know where the program will be located, but maybe if we can um also, instead of expelling our children. I mean, suspending our children and letting them go home and play video games and hang out and get get into trouble. Maybe we can have a a suspension hall along with opportunity program. Okay, so we can continue to um monitor them, get them on the right track. And let them know that this is not a vacation for you to go home and sit around and and continue to make bad choices. So um. Also on opportunity, would that be brought back at the beginning of the school year?
Yes, man, we're gonna move faster, but we're gonna be thorough and our hope is to get it up and running by the fall.
Okay, and I'm glad that we're including mental health because uh the two years and the pandemic really did a job on our kids. Actually, it did a job on all of us, so we're looking forward to that. Um. I think that's all I have, I'll keep it short, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Um mine is gonna be short, we're almost at the end of the school year, hang in there, we'll get there. I don't know about you, well, but I'm starting to count, I do weeks, then I do days, so I like small num- numbers. And that's it. Um, okay, let's go, go ahead and go, go on to a a doc- adoption of the min- minutes, thirteen thirteen point zero zero one. Board min- minutes approved as writ- written and or order filled reg- regular board meeting of April twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
I guess my motion.
And can I get a sec- second?
Turner, a second.
Thank you, and now can we, uh we're over for discussion, we don't have discussion, can we get get a vote?
I.
Trustee La French?
I.
Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
Trustee Webster, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, motion passes five zero. Onto the consent agenda, we are take taking i- items for fourteen point zero two through fourteen point. Third thirty-two. Does a- any trustee want to pull an item?
Yes, I would like to pull fourteen oh seven.
Fourteen oh seven?
Fourteen twenty-one.
Fourteen twenty-one?
Fourteen twenty-two.
Fourteen twenty-two?
Fourteen twenty-five.
Fourteen twenty-five?
Fourteen twenty-six.
Okay.
Fourteen thirty-one.
Team thirty-one. Okay, does and anyone else?
I'd like to add fourteen oh eight. Um. I don't know if we need votes on them, but I would like to make discussion on fourteen um point one five and fourteen point one six. Oh, and fourteen twenty.
Okay, so four four fourteen, well, what was that that again?
Fourteen oh seven.
I got that one and oh eight.
Um fifteen sixteen.
Oh. Twenty.
Twenty and twenty.
Trustee?
Okay, my turn. Um I put question marks next to these two, I'm not sure why I wanted to pull them, to be honest with you, but I'm gonna pull them anyway. So fourteen twelve, fourteen twenty-three. Uh fourteen twenty-seven and fourteen twenty-eight.
Alrighty.
Everybody.
Was that all of them?
Just bear.
All right, here we go, so. Let me pull the thing. Okay, so I need a mo- motion to approve the remaining. I items minus four fourteen point zero seven, fourteen point zero eight, fourteen point twelve, fourteen point fifteen, fourteen point sixteen, fourteen point twenty, fourteen point twenty-one, fourteen point twenty-two, fourteen point twenty-three, fourteen point twenty-four. Right?
No, twenty-five.
Oh, sorry. Fourteen point twenty-five, right?
Yes.
Fourteen point twenty-six, fourteen point twenty-seven, fourteen point twenty-eight. And fourteen point thir- thirty.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Was it thirty-one, sorry? Fourteen point thirty-one.
I motion to approve the remaining.
Webster, sex- seconds.
Okay, can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee La French?
I.
Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, motion passes five zero. Let let's go on to the i- items removed from the consent agenda. Okay, let's start with four fourteen point zero seven, can I get a mo- motion?
Trustee Turner, a motion.
Okay. And can I get a sec- second?
Trustee Webster, seconds.
Okay, we're up o- open for discuss- discussion.
I pulled this item because I I was looking at the fees associated with. This trip and more mainly the airfare. I see where we're using Alaskan Airlines to fly from Ontario to Sacramento. The layover is in Seattle. That doesn't make sense to me, when Southwest can go direct and a lot cheaper than. What we're paying with Alaskan Airlines. So in the future, when we book these trips, I would like us to really. Do our research and make sure that we're spending taxpayers' dollars the best we can. Because to go to pass Seattle, to pass Sacramento and go to Seattle and then come back to California, that makes sense. When Southwest fly like that, have airlines going to Sacramento all day long. So I went online today and I looked to see how much it costs at the last moment, and it was a whole lot cheaper than. Flying Alaskan Airlines. So that's my comment on that.
Any trustees?
I wanted to ask Cabinet and you, Dr. Mitchell, what was the significance with Cabinet going up there with the students in the school?
Our children are being, are competing at the state level. And so we want to be present to support them and and bring a huge fanfare to our school district. They won at the county level, and we want to support their efforts at the state level.
Okay, perfect, perfect. And any other que- questions? Then can I have a vote?
Trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee La French?
I.
Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, mo- motion pa- passes five zero zero. Okay, on to four fourteen point zero eight, amend the uh agree agreement with pro-care ther- therapy. To approve the in- increase of fund funding. By three hundred fifty fifty thousand thousand doll- dollars, can I get a mo- motion? To approve?
Webster, uh motions?
Okay, can I get a sec- second?
Trustee Turner, a second.
Okay, now we're open for dis- discussion, discussion.
Okay, I'm gonna kick this off, I wanted to ask um Cabinet and Dr. Mitchell. Oh, this is a contract for speech and language services. Um and I. I guess one of the biggest issues I'm having with this one is that you know in rationale or justification that high numbers of students transferring into the district. Um I just. I'm really confused with that statement. Um last week, we were declining, this week we're inclining, oh, can I get some explanation on that?
So uh many, many folks talk about the number of enrollments or new enrollments that we have in our district, but we have just as many drops. That's why enrollment doesn't grow. We we drop as many kids as we enroll. Uh in fact, this year over thirteen hundred. Uh so what we're finding is that uh children are moving into our service area, coming with their high-needs students and requiring special education services. Special education services are what we call compensatory. So we really don't have a choice whether or not to serve our special education students, and so these services are required by the IEP. Uh and for us to stay in compliance with your IEP, we need to ramp up staff. Uh to serve the number of kids we have. The other thing too, Trustee Webster, is our district does not employ our own speech and language pathologists.
Can we look into doing that? I mean, I. I was running some of the numbers and after looking at the the totality, we could feasibly bring this in-house.
Absolutely, we have never, we, I don't, since I've been, we, we have not, we don't have speech and language pathologists. I've asked Mr. Moran to develop to develop a uh job description, and we'll be posting for. Our first speech and language pathologist positions this spring, and that will bring our cost down, because number one. Our own staff is gonna be more um committed to our to our students and a consultant. And and so we we, there's a whole lot of benefits for having our own staff, and so this is to ramp up, uh to support the numbers that we have, we have no choice here.
Okay, um and so this contract ends the June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two, correct?
Absolutely.
At which point we'll be looking at bringing in-house.
Yeah, we would nev- yeah, we would never be able to hire that many, yes, I'll be, this is a highly, is a hard-to-fill position. Cause you, cause speech and language pathologists are highly sought after. In fact, I advise all my family members whose kids are in college to go be a speech therapist because you're guaranteed a job in education. Um and a high and pay, a high-paid job, most of, most districts offer signing bonuses and stay-put bonuses and all kinds of stuff, so. We'll be looking to fill them, where we can't fill, we'll s- we'll continue to supplement with this company.
All right, perfect, and is there any way we could reach out to local colleges, try to keep it as community-based?
Absolutely, Mr. Moran is the expert of that, and he'll be, he'll be doing all of those things.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Okay, and and any other que- questions? Can I get get a vote, vote, please?
Trustee Eckes?
Yes.
Trustee La French?
Yes.
Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
Trustee Webster, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, mo- motion pa- passes five to zero zero. Go going on to four fourteen point twelve. Approval of purch- purchase ord- orders and warrant re- report. Can I get a mo- motion to to approve?
I motion, La French.
And I need a sec- second.
Second.
Okay, we're open for dis- discussion, sc- discussion.
Okay, I pulled this one because I had a lot of questions, and one of the main ones was I noticed we.
Um I'm sorry, is is your mic on or can you bring it closer to you, Doc, um, Trustee Eck- Eckes? The red locks.
No.
And the blue, you you have to hold down, and you may have to bring it closer to your mouth. There you go.
I thought I had a big mouth, okay. Um, okay, so the reason why I pulled this one is because I had a lot of questions on it. And one of the big questions I had was there's lots of purchase orders for Chromebooks. I thought we spent a bunch of the S R money like last year or the year before. Supplying everybody with one, so why is there a new influx of these? And why so many, I I mean, one school I noticed is, whoa, I mean, the price was just crazy, everybody in the school's getting one, and then. We're also getting them for summer school, is this because we're buying them and giving them to the children or they're not returning them? Uh I'm just really confused on why so many Chromebooks within the last two years or so.
Uh a few reasons, Trustee Eckes, number one, uh the direction to our site leaders is to refresh all the technology every year. Um Chromebooks are fairly cheap devices that that go through a lot of wear and tear at our schools. And so the the price point is that the, as a Chromebook is just easier to replace them. Number two, uh schools are wrapping up to support testing. Um they need, some schools need to purchase devices to to support testing. Number three, our district is moving toward a one-to-one device. So we'd like for kids to check out a Chromebook and leave it at home instead of carrying it back and forth. But while still having access to a Chromebook in all of their classrooms, this is the way of the twenty-first century classroom. Uh Chromebooks are much like pencils now.
Yeah, okay, that was my question, thank you.
Okay, are there and any other que- questions?
Uh yes, I wanted to refer, it looks like page two of payment list. Um it looks like purchases for Hisperia Unified School District, can you kind of explain that a little bit more to me, please?
Mr. Crowe, can you speak to that off the top of your head, do you really look at that?
Yes, absolutely, thank you for that question, Trustee Webster, we use Hisperia Unified's print shop because we do not have an in-house print shop, so for instance. Our envelopes with our district logo on them for our school sites to send out business cards, things of that nature. Uh we historically have uh contracts with Hisperia Unified, and they have a uh steady art print shop that we use.
Perfect, is there any way to look at one of those for us?
Yeah, absolutely, I've asked Mr. Kraus to start looking into that. As well as a quick, quick print tool, we want to, we want our teachers to be able to send jobs to our centralized. Print shop to print them cheaper than they could at the site level printers.
Perfect, perfect, thank you.
Okay, and any other que- questions? Okay, can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, mo- motion pa- passes five zero zero, okay, four and on to four fourteen point fif- fifteen, can I get a motion to to approve?
I motion, Nickus.
And a sec- second?
A second.
And we're open for di- discussion, discussion.
Okay, I will, can I start? Okay, um I just wanted to pull these for a quick second, um. Or fourteen point fifteen, I should say, um on the Magic Mountain Trip. Um it was my understanding that this is for the eighth-grade students. Um and I just wanted to take a moment and say how beautiful these trips are, especially to. Like memorize that year, that that end of middle school, so. I'm really excited for these students, I'm really happy to see this trip on here. And I just hope that, you know, everybody involved has a super-duper time as they deserve it, they've worked all year for this, and I look forward to seeing all of our schools. Do trips like this for their eighth grade or sixth grade or kindergartens, et cetera, so. That was really just my comment on that.
Just one quick, quick comment for just the benefit of the public. Uh incentive trips such as Magic Mountain are paid for out of E S B funds, not taxpayer dollars.
Thank you.
Are there any other que- questions?
Nope.
Okay, can I get get a vote, please?
Trustee Eckes?
Uh, yes.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
Trustee Webster, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, mo- motion pa- passes five zero zero, on to four fourteen point sixteen. Approve the incent- incentive trip to Knott's Bear Berry Farm, there's the address. Uh can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Eckes, my motion.
And can I get a sec- second?
A second.
Okay, we're open for di- discussion, discussion.
Yeah, I pulled to say, I, they were the same thing next to each other, uh once again, I just want to say how excited I am for the students going to Knott's. Um still just so excited for these trips for them. I remember being in eighth grade and you work all year so hard to be appreciated, so I hope our students have so much fun on these trips. Okay.
Just a quick, quick uh comment on that too. So board, just so for you know, when we put incentive trip, uh those are paid for out of E S B, and when we put study trip. Those are educational-based and are paid for out of uh taxpayer dollar, school-based dollars, ju- just for the public to know.
You know, I just want to say real quickly, I've been in this district forever, and um when I heard a lot of our kids have. And um when I heard a lot of our kids have never even been down the hills, that just broke my heart. They live here for years and they've never gone down that hill. And it break, I mean, it breaks my heart. They've never been to the beach. They've never been to an amusement park. They've never been out of Atlanta. That is just devastating to me. And to know that there's opportunities now for us to get them out there and see things and experience things. It just, I mean, what a blessing. So I believe it's all worth it and I'm glad they're doing stuff. And it's exciting because kids need to have fun. You know, they work so hard for it. So uh I'm I'm just as thrilled as you are. I think it's great that they're doing these things. And I do understand it does come out of the school source uh money. So that's just amazing. Or they raise the money themselves sometimes. So it's just beautiful. Uh that's it. No other comment.
Okay, can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee La French?
I.
Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
Uh Webster, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I mo- motion path passes five zero zero. We move on to four fourteen point twenty approval of a U N university in internship. M M O U with Cal, Cal State U N University, Bakersfield. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Eckes, I motion.
And can I get a sec- second?
Webster, I second.
And we are o- open for discuss- discussion. Who pulled this? I have no idea. I lost, lost track.
I have pretty, I, it was me. Um, sorry. I I pulled it mostly um, is this, this is a internship program, correct? Um is it a paid program or is this essentially out of their pockets? Because Bakersfield is pretty far away.
Yes, thank you for the question, trustee Webster. So you'll see these going into the spring. You'll see dozens of these partnerships that we uh make with local universities as well as universities long, a long way away. Uh this allows for those uh students, whether it be teachers or social workers or counselors, to get their hours uh completed in our schools. It provides free service for our schools, practice for uh practice for the uh university students as well as a pool of folks that we may consider for hiring. Um you you'll see universities all over the place because now universities are doing satellite campuses all over California as well as online. So you'll find often that kids are going to school kind of all over the place now. Um so Bakersfield has a satellite as well as online coursework.
Perfect, perfect. Um. Alrighty then, I think that concludes my questions. I just wanna make a brief statement. I do think it's so great that we're bringing in those graduating college students into giving them the hours that they need to progress in their um careers. So I'm, I'm very excited to see that tonight. Thank you.
Are there any other que- questions?
No.
Okay, can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee La French?
I.
Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I mo- motion path passes five zero zero. Let let's go on to four fourteen point twenty-one. Um X extra due duties per percentage pain, payment.
My motion.
Okay, I got a mo- motion from trustee Turn- Turner. I need a sec- second.
Second on Webster.
And that, that was a mo- motion to approve, right?
Okay.
Okay, we are o- open for discussion.
I pulled this item um actually by accident, but I'm happy to report that it it's it's on current date rather than backdating these um um extra duty um stipends. So I'll just call for the vote. I'm done with that.
Okay, let's call for the vote.
Trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee La French?
I.
Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I mo- mo- motion pa- passes five zero on to four fourteen point twenty-two. Um man, management X extra due duties assignments. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Uh motion to approve.
Okay, can I get a sec- second?
I second left front.
Okay, we're open for discuss- discussion.
Okay, now this one, if you look at the effective date, it goes back to last year. Uh my question is, why wasn't this brought to the board earlier for approval and why is it brought now?
So uh two things. I discussed it with the board, so uh but I, we failed to bring it back for approval. So this was uh for Josie uh to help us with when we transitioned uh for contact tracing. And so she is our uh uh our COVID safety officer. So we've paid a whole lot of staff extra duty to cover our contact tracing, which went really well. And then with Kathy, uh she's been helping us out of human resources to help us with capacity there. Uh we failed to bring these. We're bringing them now as a r- as ratification. The reason that we're bringing them is because it was brought to our attention by counselors that these needed to be, to go to board. And so we're doing that now and we will do that going forward.
Okay, my question is, I understand um the COVID safety officer because we did not approve our contact tracing company, A M L L C. But in terms of human resource assistance, uh we ask in a principal, then then a principal have enough work to do at their school site that they're helping out human resources?
Uh yes, so in my judgment as superintendent, I deemed it necessary for us to add capacity to our human resources department. The problem that we have, that we run into with Mr. Moran is that he spends a lot of his days uh negotiating our uh with A D T A and C S E A. And sometimes he needs assistance with hiring uh panels, interview panels and screenings and and the other things like that. So he's the only senior manager in uh in human resources. And so at times uh when I deem it necessary to make sure that we can get our work done, just as we pay extra duty to teachers and classified staff and secretaries, uh sometimes it becomes necessary uh to ask managers to assist us.
Okay, um I know that we did hire like again um during COVID when we did not renew A M L L C, we took that duty upon ourselves. But you know, I don't wanna see a reoccurring thing of paying extra duty like this. Um, you know, especially backdating it almost a whole year. You know, we need to really look at our staffing and and maybe job descriptions because this should have came to the board. I I don't like, I don't like ratifications. And you know, we talked about that numerous times. And you know, I I I don't wanna see this. Okay, that's all I have on that.
Okay, and any other que- questions? Let's call for for the vote.
Trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee La French?
I.
Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Benz?
I mo- mo- motion pass passes five zero zero. Okay, we're going on to four fourteen point twenty-three. Uh accept acceptance of a certificated employee res resignation. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
I motion to approve.
And can I get a sec- second?
I second.
Turner, okay, we're o- open for discussion.
Okay, I pulled this item because I wanna praise both of these people. Um I'm gonna start first with the teacher. I know her circumstance, I believe. And um i- is, am I under the impression she left in March or is she still teaching in our district? Okay, um I think this woman's a hero and I'm just gonna shout that from the hilltop if what I understand is true. Um this was a teacher that stood up for her freedom and I praise her for that. And I wish I could have told that to her face and let her know how much I value her. Not only as a teacher, but somebody who just believes in in what she believes in. So I'm very sad to see her go. Um and the other one is um our beautiful principal, uh Mr. Kristoff. I don't wanna see him go either. I understand his circumstances. I totally get it. I'm gonna miss him so much. Um but I I get it. But on this item, we're approving both of them to accept their uh res- um resignation. I understand the principal, but the woman teacher, I I just can't get behind it. So my voice, my my vote is split, but at the same time, I have to do what I need to do. And I just wanted to acknowledge both of these people. Very fine people. I'm very sad they left our district or they're leaving our district. And it's just heartbreaking. So I just wanted to make those comments and acknowledge them.
Okay, um and any other tr- trustee?
I would like to say, um, uh Mr. Kristoff, uh he was awarded fifteen years service today. And you know, he's been with the district and in multiple positions, teacher, principal, assistant principal. And I would just like to wish him the best, you know, moving forward. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay. And I just want to say, Mr. Kr- Kristoff, good luck with the mosquito, mosquitoes.
Yeah.
You're gonna miss the high does, doesn't. Okay, can, can I get get a vote, please?
Trustee Eckes?
Uh, nay.
Trustee La French?
I.
Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I mo- mo- motion passes four one. Okay, we we go on to four fourteen point twenty-five and employment of guest teach- teachers.
I motion to approve.
Oh, that's right. I got stuck. Uh, okay, I have a mo- motion from trustee Turn- Turner. Can I get a sec- second? Webster.
Second. Give it to her.
Who said that? No.
We have ghosts in the room.
La French, I second.
Okay, we'll give that to La French. Okay, we are o- open for discuss- discussion.
I would just like to say that um I'm so happy that we have guest teachers. Every day we get a a list of teachers calling out. And you know, I'm so appreciative of these teachers coming to work in our district. Um but I, as I mentioned earlier, with our residence hubs, we can't just leave them in the classroom unattended and unsupported. And so I'm I'm talking to Dr. Mitchell in cabinet that you have to design a program for these teachers to do well, to be successful. They're in the classroom with our students and our students need high-quality teachers. And um so we have to, you have to figure out a plan to give them the support that they need, not just throw them in a classroom. So because it's it's not beneficial to anyone at that point. So I just wanted to make that statement and I'll be coming back to you to find out what your plan is and and uh checking on those teachers to see if they're supportive.
And that's. Thank you, trustee Turner. We'll get right on that.
Okay, are there any uh que- questions? Okay, can, can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee La French?
I.
Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I mo- mo- motion pa- passes five zero. On to four fourteen point twenty-six ad admin administrative new hire.
I motion to approve.
Yeah. Okay, we got a motion from trustee Turner.
Eckes, I second.
Second.
And a second from Eckes. We are open for discuss- discussion.
I pulled this because um I just wanted to um Dr. Kammer. Hammer.
Like ham.
Hammer, like, they've been telling me that all night.
We're gonna work with Turk. We're gonna drill, drill and kill.
Yes, Dr. Hammer's here. She will be um the new principal at Mesa Linda if approved tonight, which I hope that she is. Um again, I had an opportunity to visit Mesa Linda. I was really leery of the principal appointment at that school based on the problems that we're having there. We've been having those problems for some time. COVID just impacted, impound the problems. And so looking at her leadership and looking at her management of that school and the support and the respect that the student have for her and the teachers, you know, I'm I'm sure that you're gonna do, I'm confident that you're gonna do an excellent job there and with your background. So thank you. I'm happy. And like I mentioned, I'm glad that I had that visit on Friday because I was really concerned as Dr. Mitchell can tell you, but I'm confident now.
Are there any other que- questions?
Yes, trustee La French.
I don't have a question, but I just wanna say that your spirit uh tonight, when you were expressing the children and how you feel and what your plans are for Mesa Linda, I wanna tell you how I greatly appreciate everything that you said tonight. And I look forward to seeing what your presence is one to do over at Mesa Linda.
I just wanted to, I'll keep it short, I promise. Um take a second. I was there with trustee Turner on Friday and I have to say, I was impressed with the acknowledgement when we walked into classrooms and around campus from the students, from the staff, et cetera. Um and I'm personally really excited to see where that school comes to in the following months. Um hopefully by next year, we've got like a whole one eighty. And I, girl, I have faith in you. We can do it. So um and that will conclude my comment. So, thank you.
Okay, I just wanna wanna say, you got my ho- hopes up high. My hopes up high. So no, but you know what? Yes, your your pas- passion comes through. And I I do believe you will do do well. Okay? Okay, so can I get get a vote on on trustee Eckes? Do you wanna say anything? Are you good?
No.
Okay, so can I get, yeah, get a vote, please?
Trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I mo- motion pa- passes five zero zero.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, let, let's go on to four fourteen point twenty-seven. Seven and employment of a guest admin administrator. Can can I get a mo- motion to approve? I don't know. Who pulled, pulled that?
Oh, I did.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean I, mean I agree with it. So if somebody else can, it doesn't have to be me to motion to get it going.
Webster motions.
Can I get a sec- second?
I second.
Okay, we're open for discussion.
Okay, now I pulled this one because I'm, again, I'm just one board member. I'm not happy with the process that this was delivered to the board. Um it left me confused. I didn't understand it. And um I just, and I feel like we're going backwards. Um so without saying anymore, um I just, I I pulled this one just because I had a problem with the process. Not the person, the process. Uh that was all I wanted to say.
Anybody else? Okay, um I just wanted to say, uh the board is, is the what? And the, and the su- superintendent is the how. Um, I'd have heard good things about her. You know, that that she is trying, she's not, not just trying to fill fill in a spot. So that she, she's real, really trying to make things hap- happen there as she fills fills in. And as Doc, Dr. Kammer goes and Tay takes over, I guess they really won't need her, right?
Uh we'll, we'll keep her there because we uh that that means that Dr. Kammer is gonna be missing in A A position.
Uh, there we go. Okay, all right, can I get any other que- questions? Comments? Can I get get a vote? Vote, please?
Trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner? Nay. Trustee Webster? I, trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Nay.
Okay, so the mo- mo- motion pass passes for one. Let's go on to four fourteen point twenty-eight. Accept acceptance of classified employee res resignation. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
I motion to approve.
Hmm, can I get a sec- second?
Uh Eckes, I second.
Okay, we're open for discuss- discussion.
Okay, I pulled this one because um again, I'm kind of gonna miss these people. We appreciate them. Okay, I pulled this one because, again, I'm kind of gonna miss these people. We appreciate them. But I had to point out our PR guy. I couldn't dare let that go without saying something. He is awesome. I'm going to miss you greatly. You need to be acknowledged for everything you've done. You've been absolutely amazing. I wish you would stay. You already know that. But just thank you. Thank you so much for serving us and being with us and just, you know, enjoying your company. Thank you.
Okay, any other trustees? Okay, can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Eckes?
Aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Aye.
Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye. Mo- motion passes five zero. Okay, so now we're gonna go to fourteen point thirty-one, employment of classified substitutes. Can I get a motion to approve?
Eckes, a motion?
Webster, a second.
Okay, we're open for discussion.
Which one is this?
This is fourteen point thirty-one.
I pulled this.
Okay.
Okay. We're hiring a lot of substitute and people now. Are we hiring substitute staff members in order not to fill permanent positions?
Absolutely not.
Could you explain it?
These folks are for folks. These are for staff who are, who sub, for classified staff who are out sick or ill or vacation or other reasons. Strictly substitute staff, no different than substitute teachers or substitute administrators.
Okay, and will these positions, will they receive benefits?
Sub-staff does not receive benefits nor the sub-teachers.
Okay. And this is until the end of the school year?
Yes, we just continue to hire subs. As you know, some of our positions are hard to fill. And as you know, we've done two classified recruitment fairs this year. We've added a lot of regular staff as well as substitute staff. And as you know, throughout the country, hiring is an issue for all business sectors, including education.
And my question is, is this until the end of the year or is it ongoing after that?
I was ready.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Thank you, trustee Turner. So what staff does is, as we have lists of subs for classified and certificated, at the end of the year, we go through them to see which substitutes actually have taken the jobs. So if there's, if there's a group of them or a number of them that haven't been taking jobs, we will remove them from the list. We will let them know, HR staff will send them a letter and an email letting them know that they haven't, you know, it's been so many months since they've taken a job, what's their intention? And then if they don't reply, then we remove them from the list. So that's why we're constantly trying to fill because some of these certificated subs or classified subs will not take jobs. And so if they find a new job, then we just kind of have them on a list hanging. So our HR department goes through it about two or three times a year to kind of clean up the list. And then we'll have an updated list during the summer to start the school year off.
Okay, again, with substitute staff, do you have a plan on training these people before we just put them in a position or?
Yes, we do. So for some of the classified staff, for example, if they're clerical, what we've been doing is we've been providing, for example, Ares training because some of the classified staff will cover for, say, clerks or the school secretary. And so they'll have to at least know how to access. So on the start, they get view access. So we've had the Ares company, actually, they've been able to provide training and there's a, there's a link to a variety of trainings. So we're gonna improve that. I know that was a request that came our way and I've discussed that in Cabinet. So we're gonna be developing a more robust plan. In that, in addition, our job during the summer is to also offer them some hourly time to come in and get trained. Strategies and things like that, so that, so that when they go to the sites, they know how to answer phones. They have customer service, kind of skills, some of the Ares stuff. Right now, the only Ares access they get is view access because we don't, we don't want them to go in and do some of that, you know, delete information and things like that. But we'll be sure to bring that back to the board.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, you're welcome.
I had a comment. Anytime I see campus security on anything, I'm gonna vote yes on that. I think we need a lot more and our junior high schools, I believe, are crying out for it. Even if it's temporary, it is something we seriously need. I have, not this year, so nobody can take it offensive, or even last year because we had COVID. But in the past, I have been on campus. Teachers have called me and told me, you need to get down here. And I went on down there and I, the stuff you see will just blow your mind. It, I feel like I'm in another world. I have seen children just break out of classrooms and start fighting in front of me. And they're, I mean, they're wailing on each other and, you know, back then, I didn't see any security. And I'm standing there thinking, you know, everybody's life is in danger. Where are they? And I would see sometimes them off, you know, in groups, talking or on the other side of campus. And I thought, okay, I don't run the school. I don't know how this works. But I kind of expect to see the security or people on campus spread out, doing their job, checking this, checking that, having radios. If there's a problem, call the other guy, but not like, you know, chit-chat and hanging out. Again, this was just one incident when I was there, but it really, I mean, it really freaked me out. And it got so bad that I even had to tell the superintendent that I don't feel like these kids that are walking out of class sitting on the cement because they don't want to be in class and they're disrespectful to their teachers, disrespectful to the staff, the guards, everything. And I thought, we're gonna allow these kids to graduate? I got a problem with that. I think, you know, Quail, Quail Valley, if you ever tried to pull any of that there, they wouldn't let you walk. They're pulling you. You're done. You are not walking. And we still honored the kids and let them walk. And I thought, no, 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 we gotta get serious about this. We gotta do something. So again, this was an incident that happened a couple of years ago, blew my mind. I did make a comment, you know, to the principal at the time that we need to get very serious about this, really let them, you know, know that we will not put up with this. And so the principal at the time said she would take it all into consideration. But yeah, it wasn't good. So again, this was in the past and I'm looking forward to the future. And again, if I see campus security of any kind, we need that. I will approve that a hundred percent. I think we need more of it. And I really think it'll help and just kind of protect everybody there, the other students, the teachers, everybody. We just need more security, more authority, a lot of kids, and it's just kind of getting crazy. So for protection and just peace of mind, I would love to see more campus security on our board agendas. That's all.
I've said it enough. Can I get a vote to approve?
Trustee Eckes?
Aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Aye.
Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Benz?
Aye. Mo- motion passes five zero. Let's go on to six, sixteen, staff reports and presentations. Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you, board. We have another two schools here tonight to present a professional learning plan. I'll turn it over to Dr. Doyzant.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Good evening, Board President Benz, Board of Trustees, Dr. Mitchell, Cabinet, AESD Staff and Community. It is with the pleasure to continue our school's professional learning and collaboration plans this evening. This evening, we will hear updates from Gus Franklin Junior STEM and West Creek Elementary. Each school is excited to show how they are working collaboratively with their staff to grow their skills and capacities to support our students. At this time, I would like to introduce our first proud principal, Mrs. Nicole Peterson from Gus Franklin.
Are you able to share? Okay, Anthony's wanting to.
Good evening. You guys hear me? I have to go. Good evening, President Benz, Trustees, Dr. Mitchell, Cabinet, Staff and Visitors. I'm Nicole Peterson and I am the proud principal over at Gus Franklin STEM Academy. I would also like to introduce my AA, Mrs. Thornton. She's also here. I am thankful tonight for the opportunity to share out our professional learning and collaboration plan with you. So how did our plan get developed? It all started a few years back when we first were talking about things. A group of leadership team went and attended a conference or a day conference at the Seminole County Superintendent Schools. And they created what ended up being our FOCI Plan. They brought it to us, to our teachers. And then through collaboration, we were able to develop our two focus areas. And then through more collaboration, we actually dive deeper into our learning intentions and success criteria. So our two focus areas is, one is clarity for learning. Technical difficulties. Sorry about that. So our first FOCI is clarity for learning. Basically, that is making learning visible for all of our students. Means students are very clear on what it is that they are learning. Our second is collective efficacy. And this is like a mindset. It's a teacher and student mindset. If teachers believe that they can do it, students will believe that they can do it. And if students believe, they will do better and learn more. Some of the look fours at our campus and what you will see for our teacher look fours, you will see that they have their learning intentions posted in their classroom. Using a lot of verbal explanations, visual aids are used, a lot of modeling and a lot of checking for understanding. And when they're planning, they're thinking about these three questions. What am I teaching? Why am I teaching it? How do I know they have learned it? And then student look fours, what you're going to see is students being able to restate those learning intentions. They know what they're learning. Provide support and evidence in their answers, demonstrate knowledge and skill. They share and collaborate with others. And then those positive outcomes, which is that success criteria, and they are able to answer, what am I learning? Why am I learning it? And how do I know I've learned it? Our professional collaboration, this year we have a professional development on teacher clarity. And we have it provided by Ada Allen from Corwin. So we have three two-hour sessions for staff PD. And then we did three hours of one-hour guided grade-level coaching. And all of it's focused on our learning intentions, our success criteria, and our student and teacher collective efficacy. And we're using the teacher clarity playbook. Our continued professional collaboration throughout the year has also been classroom instructional walks, appreciative inquiry, observations, surveys, that teacher playbook, teacher clarity playbook, teacher experts, collaboration and coaching, data chats and the continued PLCP or that professional learning and collaboration plan review and revise. Our professional collaboration looking ahead next year, what we would like to do is dive deeper into that success criteria. We're going to be using the success criteria playbook as you see here, and we are so excited to get that process started next year. Key performance indicators, what you see is classroom observation with that focus on that learning intention and the success criteria. Our data chats are focused on student data, student growth, interventions and enrichment opportunities for them. We show our view exemplars and work, share work samples with all of our students. That's that success criteria. They know what it looks like. Shared teacher and student expectations and highlight best practices. Teacher experts share their knowledge with others and we are working together collaboratively. And I have to say, I have the best staff ever. They're doing an amazing job. So here is our success criteria, where we started and where we are right now. I give out a survey three times a year. And one of the questions is confidence in implementing clarity for learning. And the three questions, what am I learning? Why am I learning it? And how do you know you've learned it? Well, in the beginning, if you notice the graph, we had the, about fifty percent, half of them are really confident, you know, being able to implement those three questions. Now you'll notice that fifty, fifty-seven percent are now at the four level, not the three level. So that actually was a gain, moving from the level three to the level four of about twenty percent. And there are no more ones and twos. So that was exciting for, to see that. Like I said, I have an amazing staff and they're doing a great job. Of course, we have good students too, and they're doing a great job, so. So our continued success criteria, so this is our student. So if you walk in and you talk to students, they know what they're learning, they know why they're learning it, and they know what, they know when they have learned it. And not only can they show you, but they can tell you. So if you ask them, they can tell you what we're doing. And that's exciting because we love to go in and go, okay, what are you guys doing? And they get to tell us and they explain it and it's amazing to see. All right, some of our lovely pictures to share out our school culture. We're still continuing, continuously building a safe, positive and caring environment. Our primary focus is on Project Lead the Way. And then we're celebrating our AR on our PBIS as well. And then some great things that are still, that are happening all the time. We have our Project Lead the Way and there's some pictures in there, the water rocket and our VEX kits and celebrating AR, like I said, and just the fun activities that we have inside our classroom. One of our teachers calls it Flashlight Friday, so I took a picture. They like to read with their flashlight. So those are the fun things that are happening at our school. Gus Franklin teachers and staff are doing amazing things and I am so excited to be a part of it. Thank you again for this opportunity to share out my professional, our professional learning and collaboration planet for Gus Franklin. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Wait till after they're both done, so we can ask them both. Okay, sorry, I jumped the gun.
You will now hear from Mrs. Bowers, who is the proud principal of West Creek Elementary School, who's excited to share all the wonderful things taking place at West Creek. Mrs. Bowers?
Sorry about that. All right. Let me get this started. Okay, so like Dr. Doyzen said, I am the proud principal here at West Creek.
Closer.
Closer. You know, they said that was a gift of mine. When I was a teacher, I have a soft voice, so you have to listen, so. Okay, so I am the proud principal at West Creek Elementary School. My name is Deborah Bowers. And then I also have, sitting back here behind me is Mr. Howard Carrera, and he is my assistant administrator. I don't want to unmute myself, sorry. There we go. All right, too many people clicking buttons here. All right, so, and I'm here to tell you about what we are doing at West Creek. And I thank the board and the cabinet members for allowing me this opportunity. Okay, we started our professional learning and collaboration plan about three years ago when we asked the teachers, what do you need? What do your students need to be successful in the classroom? So we had that needs assessment. We had that student voice. So we had that needs assessment, we had that student voice or that teacher voice. We took that survey that we gave to the teachers. We looked at it in our grade level groups to drill it down even further, find out exactly what we needed. We looked at it in leadership and we decided what were some professional development opportunities that we could have for our teachers to make them more successful in the classroom. And then we started looking at the success criteria. So this whole process that we went through started, like I said, about three years ago. And it always had our teachers and staff were involved in the decision-making. And what we came up with was that at our site, we needed to focus on reading comprehension. And as we started really looking at it, it wasn't just about reading comprehension. It was what do we do with children who are in fourth and fifth grade, but only read at a kindergarten level? How can we support them? And so that's what started to drive our decisions for our professional learning plan. We also wanted to make sure that our social emotional needs of our students were met. If you've ever come to my campus, people ask me, what is, what, how do you describe our campus? And I'll tell you, we're the campus of HUGS. And so we wanted to make sure that that was throughout our campus. And so we started looking at some of the social emotional needs of our students. That's where we decided to start doing UDL, which is the universal design for learning. And it's more of strategies, how to break down those barriers for our students and make sure that everybody has the access to the curriculum that they need. And through that process, we discovered core reading. And that helps us to look at what are the early literacy, the foundational skills that our kids need. And so this year, our staff completed an eight-week online module course with Core Reading. And then moving into next year, we'll also be just exploring more of those early literacy foundational skills. It starts with phonemic awareness and moves into reading comprehension. We also looked at coaching and we wanted to make sure that our teachers were not just giving, getting a one day, here's all this information. We wanted to bring in coaches and make sure that they were being reinforced throughout our school year. Our professional collaboration, I really depend on my teachers to be the experts on our campus. And they have great ideas, they're doing great things in their classroom. So we started collaborating and having teachers share out their best practices in their classrooms. And this, this is just a small snippet of what we talk about when we do our professional development on Tuesdays and also around the lunch table, break room. These are some of the things that they talk about. Our success criteria with this, once again, we have a full page of it. This is just a real quick snapshot. Teachers, what are teachers doing? They might be explicitly instructing students about phonemes. And then what are the children doing? They're applying that knowledge throughout the day in every curricular area. Instructional feedback is very powerful and it's something that we do daily in our, in our, on our campus. Some of the more formal ways are through the data chats that we have, where we actually have teachers come in in grade levels and we work together as a grade level, have those data chats. We do the appreciative feedback, where we will leave notes on teachers' desk about the positive things that we're seeing in the classroom. We'll also have weekly emails that go out to our staff that lets everybody know what is happening and the great things that are happening on our campus. But our collaboration and coaching piece has been the strongest. It's where teachers get to sit down with those coaches four to five times a year. They get to have honest conversations about what they need, what supports they need, what's working well in their classroom. And so that has been, the coaching collaboration piece has been very, very powerful with our staff this year. Some key performance indicators. We look at data all the time. We're always using the formative assessments. Those are what we see happening daily on our campus, classroom observation, teachers' classroom observation. We look at our attendance because when kids feel successful in school, they'll be at school. And also, we really like to make sure that we're rewarding our students with some kind of student awards, pirate awards, some fun things. So the participation of our students in those activities shows us how we're doing on our campus. Our school culture is that of clarity and learning. You kind of already heard Ms. Peterson talk about that with her teachers, that it is where teachers are addressing those barriers, they know what they're teaching and they know why they're teaching it. And for the social emotional piece, we wanted our kids to understand what their part, what is their role in our community. So teaching that self-awareness this year. And last time we applied for it, PBIS, we were gold status at West Creek. Some of our fun activities we do, you can come by once a month and back Thursday. We have our last pirate award. We have pizza and ice cream. The kids are always asking how do we be a part of that? And we leave it up to the teachers. The teachers nominate two students each month to join me and get those top pirate awards. We had family nights. It's something that's very important to me and my staff is to have those family nights. Everybody participates, the whole staff. We teach the families about math literacy, reading literacy, and how to help their kids. It's a great time for the students and the parents to sit down and do some fun academic things. And then also our study trips. It's always been very important that our students go on study trips. Every student on our campus has gone on a study trip this year. And we're looking forward to finishing up the month of May with some more study trips coming up. So it's something that the kids, because just like I believe Trustee Webster was talking about, it's exciting for the kids to go and they're learning and they don't even realize they're learning. Okay, so thank you. I want to thank the board, thank the cabinet members for allowing me to tell you a little bit about West Creek. And you know, and it wouldn't be possible. This presentation is made so easy for me because I do, I have a great staff and this is just who we are at West Creek. And this is what we practice every single day, not just teachers, but classified. Everybody works together to make sure our kids are successful at West Creek. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, do you have questions?
Trustees, do you have quick questions?
I have a question for West Creek. All the houses being built in your area, are you noticing a lot of kids coming to the schools? Or inquiring or anything?
We have seen quite a few kids coming in. I think one week we had like seven come in at all different grade levels, so. I'm looking forward to the possibility of lots of growth coming in. We have the classrooms ready. I just need the students to fill those seats.
That's exciting because I see they're moving in like crazy over there. So it's real exciting to see that.
Yeah, if you haven't been down Cobalt, there are, it has changed. It has changed dramatically.
Yes. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, I should have asked you too. Are you noticing? I am so sorry. Have you noticed an influx in your school of children? Yeah. Awesome, okay, great. Trustees, questions? Comments really quick?
Really quick comment.
Really quick comment, yeah.
I just wanted to say that I'd like and can feel the proudness that you guys have for your staff. And hugs are always great, you know, I'm a hugger, I love hugs. But the growth where you say that you can see the growth in your children since they've started, you know, that's very positive. I'm gonna be quick. The daily instruction feedback is key. It's always nice to have teachers coach each with each other and be able to communicate on a daily basis to be able to give feedback to one another. That is so important.
And, and, and any other trustees?
Thank you for your presentation. I don't have any questions because you guys pretty much answered everything and you're so organized. I like that. I like the teacher, the student involvement, you know, at West Creek. You can ask the student that does, they know what they're learning and they know how to articulate it. And I like that. That's all right. Okay.
You want to?
I'll make a very quick one, I promise. I do want to go on for West Creek. I admire your family nights, the parent engagement. I think that is such an important measure. And I'm, I'm glad to see that. I'm impressed with you as a school to see you engaging the parents. Gus Franklin, Ms. Peterson. You know, one of my favorite things about you and Ms. Thornton is I see you every morning. Somebody is walking kids across that, that driveway. And I feel that that is just so essential for our students to see our administration out there, see them hands-on with them. I know you are my daughter's, one of them, one of my daughter's favorite people every day to go see. So you know, the appreciation just as a mother for you to take that in is more than words can describe. So thank you, both of you ladies, for your presentations tonight.
I just want to say thank, thank you and thank you for your patience. I appreciate it really, everybody's. Thank you. Okay, on to six, 16.002.
Board, we're going to table this presentation. It's a meaty and hearty presentation that we know is information that you're going to want to see. It's our suspension comparisons over the last few years, as well as our plans for PBIS reset, restorative justice, and mental health practices and all the kinds of things that we're doing or planning to keep kids safe and, and keep kids accountable for their behavior. All the kind of conversations that you've been talking about tonight, particularly around Mason Lidda. So we want you to be engaged in that presentation. And so we're going to table it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to seven, seventeen, new business, business, seventeen point zero zero one. Approved Board Res Resolution, twenty-one point twenty-two point third thirty. Make, making findings as required by AB three six one to permit the Board of Trustees meet, meeting to continue to be conducted by teleconference while the COVID-19 emergency remains in place. So can I get a motion? Is this a discussion?
This is.
It's on in business, okay? Can I get a motion to approve?
I motion.
Motion from La France, can I get a sec, a second?
Are you motioning to continue to meet in public or go back to teleconference?
Not permitted to continue. Go ahead.
What I recommend, I mean, the essence of this was that board request to consider going back to teleconference or Zoom. And so I'd say to approve returning to Zoom for board meetings is what the AB three sixty-one is.
When did the board ask you to do this?
Second? Don't we need a second?
Yeah, we need a second. And this is to.
May I ask, Trustee Turner made the request of Trustee Benson. It was properly, was properly agendized by the board president.
I asked this because we have to do it every meeting, every month. And so I wanted to continue to do it to see if there's a situation where we have to go back until we're out of this pandemic, we're still in the pandemic. In the event that, I think at the last board meeting, it was of contact tracing, someone came in with COVID. And so, you know, I wanted to just take cautionary methods to see if we needed to go back in. If not, then we can vote not to.
Is your mic on?
So to take cautionary measures in the event that we needed to go back in, this is the time to do it. And actually, we should, I'm recommending that we keep it on the agenda every month, in the event that we have to. So we can always vote if we don't need to, we can vote to stay in open session. And if not, then we have it on the agenda to go back and to close if we have to. So I did ask Trustee Benson to put it here. So that was what my question was, was it a motion to stay in open or was it to go back to close?
Yeah, it was a motion.
I thought it was a motion to have a discussion.
No, it's a motion to. Yeah, the motion to have a discussion, okay.
Right.
So your motion was. You gotta go one way or another.
Yeah, I recommend that you make a motion to exercise AB three six one and meet telephonically over Zoom.
So we had a motion, let's have a vote.
No.
No, no, no. We're having a huge discussion here, you guys.
Okay.
Madam President, I have a first from La France. I need a second.
I think it was from Turner. Yeah.
Turner?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, did this discussion, discussion.
Okay, well, I'll jump in. If you move down to the justification and the rationale, I was very confused on this. I didn't see the word Zoom. I did see the word teleconference and to me, there's a difference. In our board policies, bylaws, whatever you want to call it. If a board member is ill out of the district for any reason, cannot make it to a board meeting, they do a telephone, a teleconference. That has always been in our policy, it's always available. Any board member who does not feel comfortable coming to a board meeting for any reason can do a teleconference. So again, I was confused, I didn't see the word Zoom. But anyway, getting back to teleconference, again, it's always been there, always available. But here's the catch on this one. And it says right here, if you look at the justification and rationale, when you do a telephone conference, it is required by law that you give your location, your address, everything. And it's put on the front of the agenda to let everybody know in the world where you are and where you're going to be to do your part of the telephone conference. At the same time, your door has to be wide open. You have to allow the public in there. They have to, they are, you can't stop them. It's a public meeting wherever you are, whether it's in your own home, a hotel, a restaurant. It is public and that person is allowed by law to walk in there and join the meeting with you, even make comments if they want to. So having said that, it kind of makes no sense to me. Again, I didn't see the word Zoom, I saw telephone conference. If you're worried about COVID, you just now let anybody in the public into your home, into your hotel room, into your conference space. So that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. That's why I had kind of an issue with this. Again, didn't see the word Zoom, I just saw telephone conferencing. So again, I was confused, I didn't understand this. Because again, the board at any time can do a telephone conference. Going back into Zoom to me is a whole nother story. Taking the full board back into Zoom, when we have teachers teaching in the classroom, we're doing retreats face-to-face. I don't see the justification. We are back, we're in the open, we're not wearing masks anymore. I mean, everything is just wide open. And so to take it back without really having full justification, I kind of have a problem with that. But again, you always have that option of doing telephone conferencing if you don't want to come to a board meeting for any reason. So this one's kind of a weird one for me. I don't know how to respond or react to it.
Assembly Bill three sixty-one was established by the governor in the event of a pandemic. And it extended to 2024. So it's different and it means the Brown Act. And you're absolutely correct. If a board member is out of town for whatever reason or can't come in and they know it in advance, then their address has to be posted. If everyone is back, if we voted to come back and meet in public, then that is the requirement. If we vote under AB three sixty-one, if the pandemic, if the pandemic continue and there's an outbreak and we have to go back in, then we can exercise the amended Brown Act. And we do not have to open our doors. We don't. And that, that's the Assembly Bill three sixty-one.
And that, that's the Assembly Bill three sixty one. Now, um, I wasn't here at the last board meeting. I, I, I was, I was, I, I listened to the meeting, but I could not participate. And I could not vote because my address was not listed. So that was the difference because the board had voted to come return back to open session. Now, I understand that we did have contact tracing that someone had COVID. And that's why I asked to put this back on. And I, I think it's something that we should do. We are in the midst of a pandemic. We, we are still in this pandemic. And we can't exercise Assembly Bill three sixty one if we have to return back unto, uh, Zoom. It doesn't necessarily have to say Zoom. We're, we're quoting the Assembly Bill. It speaks to amend the Brown Act. So, um, look like everyone is fine, you know, um, cases are going up. And I just want us to be aware and, and make sure that we protect ourselves in the event that we have to do this. We'll do it month by month until this, 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 um, Assembly Bill expires in twenty twenty four.
Clarification, trustee Turner. Uh, when you're meeting in Zoom, the requirement is that you bring this back to continue meeting in Zoom. Now that we've not, we're not meeting in Zoom, we don't need to bring this back every month. It's only to continue in Zoom. Yes, so, so if we're in Zoom, we were required to bring it back every thirty days to, to, to determine if we're going to continue in Zoom. So that provision is only way for in Zoom. Now that we've, the, the board voted not to return to in person, we don't need to bring this item every, every, uh, back every time. But I do think it's prudent, what you're saying to have it, to, to put it on every month anyway. If we do need to go back. So I just want to clarify.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're going to call for a vote.
Before we call for the vote, I do want to say something. I do want to say that the last time we were here and we were exposed, I myself, um, was scared because, you know, I received a text message. I didn't receive a phone call saying that I was exposed. I do have family members at home that, you know, um, fall under a certain health. And I just didn't appreciate, just like anyone else, that when I'm at work, when I'm notified about something, especially if you have a direct exposure to someone, someone has the kind decency to call you on the phone and say, hey, maybe you should do X, Y, Z. I received the text.
Yes, we, we heard that trustee, uh, La French and, uh, you're absolutely correct. And we'll, we'll, I think we've gotten a little lax on our COVID procedures. And so please accept my apology. And we'll, 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 uh, get, get better about that. Thank you.
Okay, any other que- questions, comments? Okay, can we?
I'm going to understand the motion.
What, what's the motion?
It's to resume.
Yeah, what is? Is, so the motion is, uh, we're motioning to approve the resolution to go back to Zoom meetings. That's the motion right now.
Okay, so we're, the mo- motion is to go back to, to Zoom.
Correct.
Okay, can I get, get a vote?
Trustee Echus?
None.
Trustee La French?
I.
Trustee Turner? Trustee Webster? Uh, Webster, nay. Trustee Benz?
Benz, nay. Mo- motion fa- fails. Uh, two, three, or three, two. Okay, let's go on to the next thing, seven, seven seventeen point zero zero, zero two. Approval of the ten tentative agreement for twenty twenty one, twenty two be between the Ad- Adalantlanto L Elementary School Dist- District and the Adalantlanto Di- District T- Teachers Association, ADTA and corresponding A B twelve hun- hundred. Can, can I get, get, can I get, get a vote to approve?
Echus sign motion.
Can I get a sec, second?
Webster, a second.
And we're open for discuss- discussion. Hearing none, call for the vote.
I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I. Mo- motion pa- passes five zero, zero. Okay, go, going on to seven seventeen point zero three. Approval of the tent tentative agreeing agreement for twenty twenty one, twenty two between the Ad- Adalantlanto Elementary School Dis- District and the California Employees School Assos- Association, C S E A chap, chapter four fif- fifty one and the core correspond- responding A B twelve hundred. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Echus sign motion.
Can I get a sec, second?
Turner, a second.
Okay, we're, we're open for de- discussion, discussion. Hearing none, please call for the, the vote.
Trustee Echus?
I.
Trustee La French?
I.
Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
Trustee Webster, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I. Motion, motion pa- passes five zero. Okay, move, moving on to seven seventeen point zero four. Approval of the res- resolution two, twenty one point twenty two point twenty nine. Off authorize rising five filing of applications for the preschool transitional kind kindergarten and full day kindergarten garden fa- fa- facility grant program. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Echus sign motion.
And can I get a sec, second?
I second.
Turner, and we're open for dis- discussion, discussion?
I think it's awesome.
I agree.
Okay, can I get a call for vote, please?
Trustee Echus?
I.
Trustee La French?
I.
Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Uh, Benz, I. Mo- motion pa- passes five zero. Okay, on to seven, seven seventeen point zero five. Approval of the, um, Amer- American Red Cross First Aid CPR Instructor Course for Mash- Michelle Ma- Ma- McGraw Core Coordinator of Transportation and Driver Training. Can I get a motion to approve?
Echus sign motion.
And can I get a sec, second?
Turner, a second.
Okay, we're open for de- discussion, discussion?
Um, the CPR training, um, can we extend that to other? Want to get it done?
Mr. Cross?
Yes, absolutely, uh, trustee Turner, anyone that's interested in this, uh, Red Cross program to get CPR certified, we are more than, uh, able to do that, yes.
Would the employee have to pay if they're not in this card of glory?
I believe they have to pay their own fee for the certification, uh, with the card. But, uh, we can offer the classes and, uh, also help them become a trainer if they'd like to in our district.
Okay, great. So we can advertise that with the staff?
Yes, I believe we do now, but I'll definitely, uh, follow up and see to what extent we advertise that to our staff members.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Echus?
I.
Trustee La French?
I.
Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I. Mo- mo- motion pa- passes five zero, zero. Okay, go, going on to seven seventeen point zero six. Approval of the agree- agreement with Total Comp- Compensation Systems, Inc. For the Gov- Governmental Account- Counting Standards Board GASP seven seventy four, seventy five. Report. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Echus sign motion.
And can I get a sec, second?
A second.
And, uh, we're, we're open for discussion? Can I get, get a vote, please?
Madam President, was that trustee Turner for second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Echus?
I.
Trustee La French? Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster.
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I. Mo- motion pass passes five zero. Okay, go, going on to seven seventeen point zero seven. Approval of the agreement with Alt- Alter for Mon- Monarch Fin- Financial Software. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Echus sign motion.
And can I get a se- second?
Webster, a second.
And we're open for de- discussion, discussion? Okay, here, hearing none, call for, for the vote.
Trustee Echus?
I.
Trustee La French? Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee, uh, Benz?
Benz, I. Mo- mo- motion pa- passes five zero. Okay, going on to human re- resource sources. Creation of a position, position, direct director of information technology. And I get a mo- motion to approve? It allow, allows us to open for discuss- discussion?
Webster motions.
Echus, a second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're open for dis- discussion, discussion.
Um, personally, I'd like to see this rewritten or revamped so that we could somehow uh, make improvements in that department without having a director. Uh, maybe use that director money to have a split, uh, position in there or hire more IT people. I really don't know. I'm just not comfortable with having a director or creating a position for a director. That's my only comment.
Trustees?
Again, um, you know, I know it was explained, then we talked about it, but, you know, the fact that we are have laid off teachers and, uh, was building up the district office again. You know, I feel that, again, we can hire more workers than a director to get more work done. So, um, that being said, that's all I have on it.
You know, I, I don't want to sound repetitive, but I, I do have to acknowledge the fact that we did, we, you know, we're, we're putting teachers out, but building up a, a, a portion of our D O. The other thing is, you know, I want to make sure that all of our schools are technology supported. And, you know, I, I don't want to hear, well, it's only one man coming up in the, in the next year. So, yeah, I have to agree. I feel like hiring more IT with a coordinator sounds a little bit more opportunistic, so.
Okay, trust, trustee La, La French?
I think that we should table it so we get more information on it because without, um, any technology, I don't see how we're going to run across the board.
The only problem with that is we've already tabled it once and I don't know if we're allowed to table it again. Uh, we can ask for it to be brought back, maybe changed or redirected. I don't know. I don't know, Madam President.
Well, um, Madam President hasn't said her com- comments yet.
No. Being tabled, to my knowledge, board policy, once you table it, you have to deal with it. You can't table it again.
So, you know, I understand when we put their direct director in the job ti- title of, everybody gets E. Um, and I understand we had to riff twenty five te- teachers, but I believe, I think, can I say? Um, all but one T, all, all but one pos- poses, posis- position. They're, they're going to be asked back. So technically, we're not losing T, teachers. Um, Dr. Mitch Mitchell, he wants a dir- direct director so that we get somebody of cal- caliber because we have had issues with the tech. You know, poor Miss, Mr. Asu- Suna has been like, run, running on all seven, seven cylinders. You know, trying to key, keep us run, running. When we were at this distance learn, learning, there was a huge issue. The email mails down and the fact that everything, ninety nine point nine percent of the di- dis- district is run on IT. Now, from the pay of the I, IT man, manager to the director is an increase of twelve thousand dollars. That's not enough to hire two pe- people to get that one position or such. You know, um, I think it's just that it's got that name of direct director. And I, you know, I would really hate to, down the road, we have a major crash. I know that San Bern, Bern- Bernadine, Dino Sid- City a few year, years ago, um, had a huge, um, malware rants, ransom. I remem- remember my, my friends who were there on Face- Fa- Facebook freaking out because it was bad. So, I don't know. I'm, I'm think, thinking of the, the future of the dis- dis- district. So, you know, I, I think we, we should just vote because, yeah. Yeah, so I think this, this thing has been ta- tabled. I don't know what else to do with it. Um, tr- trustee Turn- Turner?
Yes, I would just like to say that our enrollment, we, we're declining enrollment. And one of the reasons why it came to us to lay off teachers was because of class sizes. And, um, and even our budget, our third year out, it showed that we will be deficit. We will not have a positive budget. Now, you're saying that we're keeping all the teachers except for one. But we're increasing, we're increasing our staff, but we have not, our, our enrollment is declining. So I don't know where this money is coming from. And we were told that the COVID money is going away. And we're giving, we've given out some substantial raises. So until someone can show me that, um, we can afford these positions, all of these positions that we're hiring, then, um, we will, we will be in deficit spending. And that's something that I don't want to see. Of course, our IT department is important to us. It's important. But as far as directors and all of that, and, and we need managers, yes. We need workers, yes. We need our system up. But as far as a director to sit over there and do what? I mean, enrollment is still going down. Until we put in a marketing plan to get more students in this district, I will not be the one to hire at the top. I want workers to work. I want teachers to teach. I want classrooms filled with students. And until we can get that done, then, I'm sorry.
Trustees and any other ques- questions or com- comments? Okay, well, I guess if this goes to, to vote.
Okay, trustee Echus?
I'm voting no.
Trustee La French?
Before I vote, I'm not clear.
What, what's wrong?
No. Yeah, that was closed session, trustee, uh, La French.
So, either voting for a director or not, no director, and they can revamp it, bring it back?
Just to clarify.
Just to clarify, we currently have two managers in IT. We will, we will not increase the number of total managers. It would be two. We would just be changing the title of one of them. So we will still, we have two managers in the department now. We will continue to have two managers in the department. So we're not increasing the number of management. We're increasing the qualifications required to be for, for the senior position.
Want to come back to you?
Okay. Skip, skip? Yes.
Trust, for now. Trustee Turner.
Nay.
Trustee Webster.
Nay.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
May.
Okay, mo- mo- motion fa- fails for one. Okay, let, let's go on to the next one, seven, seven, seventeen point zero, zero, zero nine, Creation of a Pos- Position School Soc- Social Work Worker. Can, can I get a mo- motion to approve?
All motion to discuss.
And can I get a sec- second?
I second.
Okay, we're open for discussion, discussion. Trustee Echus.
Well, I can go first. I, I believe that, now, this position is something that we need. Our children are suffering social emotional burnout, and, uh, we need a social worker to help our students. So, I'm looking, this is something that I can get behind, the social worker, because it's greatly needed, and it'll be paid at LCAP funds. So I, I, I recommend that we approve this.
Trustees? We're open for discussion, discussion.
I guess, again, my, my problem is creating more positions again. I know we need something like this, but at the same time, creating positions at this time is just not something I'm really comfortable with. I know when we had Beth, um, she did a lot. I mean, that woman did almost everything, and she was like a one-man team. And our district is very well-staffed, and I'm just wondering if, you know, maybe we can pull resources from our upper management to, I mean, not be a social worker, but contribute. She worked with the foster kids and did a lot of mental health, and she just did so much, you know, creating a separate position, again, would be nice in a perfect world where we had, you know, good money and not such a top-heavy district. That's kind of where I'm coming from.
Um, this, this is paid from the, the LCAP as opposed to the gen- general fund. So, uh, yeah, and it's not so, but mostly it's come, it comes from the, the LCAP, the LCAP. So where man, management is paid from the gen- general fund. So it doesn't pull from there, and this, this way, our kids can get that soc- social emo- emotional help that, that they, they need. We have some, someone in the dis- district who will know, know our kids and our schools and our fam- families.
Board, I want to just clarify something, uh, for trustee Echus. So, so number one, uh, the social work position is a non-management position. Number two, a, a social worker is a licensed therapist. Uh, our counselors and our administrators are not therapists. We're not qualified to provide therapy. This is, this is, uh, hiring a very, very particular skill set in a very, very tough time. Most of our surrounding districts have already done this, and also speaking of Beth, this is actually coming from Beth's recommendation on the LCAP that she developed before she left. She actually recommended hiring six of them. So just wanted to share that.
That's good information. Um, if we hire this person, are they solely ours? Or are we going to have a problem like we're having with the officers and the probation people where they split their time? Is this somebody who's going to be ours and ours only, or are we going to be sharing them with other schools, other districts? I mean, I, I kind of need to know stuff like that.
Uh, this, this would be a, our employee, uh, the sheriff, uh, the sheriff officers is a different, is a different boat. They are full-time officers, but they still are sworn officers, and if there's a city emergency, they'd be, they would respond, and we would expect them to, we would want them to respond. But in terms of this position, this would be a full-time position for A S D.
And they'll be working out of our district office?
Yes, ma'am.
And we have room for them?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Are there, and, any other que- questions? Can I call for, for a vote?
Trustee Echus.
Okay, I was going to vote no, but because I've heard argument, I will vote yes.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Hi.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I, mo- mo- motion pass passes five zero, zero. Go, going on to seven, seventeen point ten, uh, Creation of Position, Teacher, Teachers on Special, Special, uh, Assignment, TOSA. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
All vote to discuss.
Webster, a second. Okay, we're open for discussion, discussion.
We are open for discussion.
In lieu of time, I don't, I have no comment.
Okay, so I'll start off, so, you know, I, I do like this idea that, you know, T, teachers can give one, one-on-one su- support. I think it's more appreciated from those who have been in the cla- classroom. I know that there are men, many times as a T, teacher, I wish that I could go to a classroom and watch how somebody else does it. You know, we're, we're kind of alone in the cla- classroom, though I know now the schools are, you know, collab, collaborate, rating more. But to have that one, one-on-one where you, you can ask que- questions or be, be, be observed, I think, think is going to be great for our T, teachers. And in the long, long run, our stu- students. I have a quick question. With the, the TOSA, um, will these TOSA's be dispatched to multiple different schools, or will they be at one stationary school?
No, they will serve the district needs, and so they will provide professional development, coaching, supports across the district.
Okay, so one TOSA could be at multiple elementary schools?
Absolutely.
Perfect, awesome, thank you so much.
Are there any other que- questions or com- comments?
I would like to make a comment. You, we've had TOSA's in the past, and, you know, we pull our great teachers out of the classrooms, which, it's a need, all of our teachers. We wish that they all were great. A lot of them need training, um, especially our newer teachers. I would just hate to see this go in a different direction than what it's intended to do. I don't want them stuck in the district office. And, and in the past, I've seen that, that they pull these teachers out of the classroom, stick them in the district office, and then have them doing some, something, you know, and even though I like the concept, I just want them to do what we say that they're going to do.
Understood, thank you, trustee Turner.
So, can we call for a vote, please?
Trustee Echus.
Nay.
Trustee La French.
Nay.
Trustee Turner.
Nay.
Trustee Webster.
Nay.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I, mo- motion fa- fails for one. Okay, let, let's go on to eight, eighteen point zero, zero, one, re-review, uh, board bylaw twen- nineteen, ninety-three, two, twenty-three. Can I get a mo- motion?
I guess my motion.
Can I get a sec- second?
I second.
Okay, now we're open for discuss- discussion.
I like the idea because then my brain's not fried. It's almost ten thirty right now, and, yeah, we're getting tired, and just to let everybody know, we got a second closed session, so it's going to be a long one.
I like this idea. I could be home before dessert.
Okay, but how can we stick to this i- idea?
We got to make the agenda shorter. There's a way to do it. I have been on delegate assembly for seven years, and these people got it going on. They know how to make a meeting happen and end within an hour or two. It can be done. If we all do our homework, we stick to the, the facts, we don't go off subject, uh, we can move a lot quicker. Things can be done, and not packing the agenda, things that can be discussed at another time, or in a simpler way, I really think would help a lot. Um, our last agenda was packed. This one was pretty heavy. Um, I don't know, we just got to start paying more attention to what we're putting on our agendas. And what's really sad, and I have to make this comment, we are board members. We are put on this board to put items on the agenda, and I'm not going to ask to take a roll call, but, um, I never see board members put anything on our agenda. It is always the superintendent, always the staff. We have ideas, we have great things, we can contribute to this board, to this district. And when we go to these conferences, I don't know about the rest of you, but I come back with a million ideas that I would love to see put on these agendas, and we just don't do it. We just do the, the district's work, and that's it, and we're silent as board members, and I would love to see board members put more and more things on the, our agenda for us to discuss and do. We can make really great things in this district if we start implementing and putting things on our own agenda. So, I don't know, that's just my comment. I would just like to see more board input on our agendas.
Additionally, um, you know, when I was at NSBA, they spoke highly of like study sessions, um, where we get the board together, you know, more than just the two times a month. And I can't speak for the board, but I believe that would tremendously help us be able to understand, um, come together, have a little bit more time for explanation as a whole. So, that's going to be my input.
Any other tr- trustees? Okay, so I believe there were some change, changes, so we need to, a mo- motion to approve for the fir- first read.
Yes, I motion to do that.
Can I get a sec- second? Do, or do, do we just want, want to adopt, adopt it out, outright? Be because it changes that it ends at nine, nine thirty?
If I'm not mistaken, I think we can just go ahead and vote it. That's what we did last time, I think.
Okay, so let, let's, let's vote.
Some, Madam President, I just need to clear, this vote is to change the time to nine thirty, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, trustee Echus.
I.
Trustee La French.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Nay.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Nay. Mo- mo- motion pass passes three, two. All right, let's go on to our sec- second closed sess- session. We will, will be taking items nine, nineteen point zero two to nine, nineteen point zero four. Can I get a mo- motion?
I motion.
Webster, seconds.
Okay, so that was Echus.
Wait, Madam President, you're voting, you're just declaring the, the closed session declaration.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So I'm declaring, uh, we will be, no, I did, nine, nineteen points, so we need the.
Uh, we have no, uh, comment for close, second closes.
Okay, so to, twenty-one point zero, zero, one, re- recess to close sess- session. So I have a mo- motion from Webster?
Echus and Webster.
Okay, so mo- motion from Echus, second from Webster, and our time is ten thirty-four.
Let me take the vote, please.
Oh, yes.
Trustee Echus. Trustee La French.
I.
Trustee Turner. Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I, the time is still ten thirty-four.
Yes. Let's do this. Let's go in there, get her done.
Order, can I get a roll, roll call?
Trustee Echus.
Here.
Trustee La French. Trustee Turner.
Here.
Trustee Webster.
Here.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, here, we have nothing, nothing to re-report out, so can, can I please get a mo- motion to adjourn?
Webster, seconds.
Okay, can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Echus.
Yes.
Trustee La French. Trustee Turner.
Hi.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I, mo- 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 motion pass passes five zero, zero. The time is now eleven fifty-three. Good night.
Good night.